Well, good evening. It's nice to see you all here in person. Before we get started with our meeting, I was going to ask Councilmember Bolden to offer her prayer.
Let us bow and pray. Father, once again, we come to you with our head and arms, thanking you for your grace and your mercy. Father, help us to set our minds on what you have called us to do, and let it be according to your will and your purpose. We ask that you strengthen us, restore us, and fill us with your peace. Father, we rely on your guidance. Apostle, remember, that it is you who gave us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Father, as we may to serve our community, guide us through our resources wisely and well to represent all members of our city fair. Help us to always act in accordance with what is best for our communities and citizens within. Father, we thank you, Father. Everyone is gathered here this evening. Father, we pray for those who are recovering at home or still struggling with the virus. We pray for our families. We ask that you comfort them in these difficult times. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. I will now call our meeting, the City Council, September 8th, 2020, to order. And I would ask our city secretary if we have anyone that has signed up for the open forum.
No one.
Okay. Then we will move along to Agenda Items 3 and 4. If there's anything council would like to visit about regarding the minutes from our September 1st meeting. If not, the chair would entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And number five, our regular agenda. And A is our public hearing. Hold a public hearing and receive citizen input on the fiscal year 2020, 2021 proposed budget. And we're going to hear from Pam Curbo, our Finance Director.
Good evening, Council. I would say it's nice to see your smiling faces, but I don't know if you're smiling at all. That could be a good thing or not for me. So tonight, we're going to have a, like I said, a public hearing on our budget. I'll be back. I may not be able to see now. The budget as is presented to y'all tonight includes, as you will understand after the last meeting, we added, went back and added the subsidy for the CB. So that is in the updated version of the budget that y'all did receive this past week. The budget currently is built on a proposed tax rate of 63 cents per $100 valuation, which generates an additional amount of revenue of $365,000 for next fiscal year. For fee schedule changes, this is going to be the last of our five-year phase-in on our utility and sanitation rates. If y'all recall, several years ago, we had a rate study done, and they phased in all of the adjustments over a five-year period. This represents the last of those rate adjustments, and it only affected in the water division. Sewer and sanitation and street maintenance, there will be no adjustments, just the last year in the water division. For the general fund, we anticipate starting the fiscal year with a little over $11 million. And you'll see that we estimate ending the year with a little over $10 million. Most of that, of course, is going to be your one-time expenditures, our capital items, as are presented in the budget, handful of CIP items, and a handful of capital equipment items. Utility, same way. This is basically marrying the current year budget in utility. There was not a lot of changes here. You will notice down there under proposed capital expenditures of 6.4 million. Those are new CIP items that were added to the existing budget. We will have some carryover for uncompleted CIP for the current year, but these represent 6.4 million in new capital expenditures for the utility fund. Here again, we will draw down on our reserves. We're starting the year at 25.8 million and ending at 19.4. The majority of that, of course, is the CIP one-time expenditure items. Sanitation fund, pretty much the same way. We actually are going to end the year pretty close to where we started, a little bit over. We do have quite a few capital expenditures this year. We've got two, I think, roll-off trucks that are budgeted, and also a couple of big, large pieces of equipment at the landfill that are one-time expenditures. Actually, they're one-time every decade or so. So we did have almost $1.5 million worth of capital expenditures that are included in the sanitation fund budget. Of course, tonight, we'll hold our first public hearing, and then we will have a second public hearing next Tuesday night. And immediately following that, we will have the adoption of the budget. So with that, I will step aside, and let y'all start your public hearings. Thank you very much.
So it is a public hearing. If there is anyone here that would like to speak for adopting this budget? Is there anyone here speaking against the adoption of the budget as presented? Okay, seeing none. Public hearing is now closed, and I will allow council members, if you have any questions or clarifications or comments, from Ms. Curbo.
I have just one question. In the budget, there is funding for maybe personnel pay increase?
Yes.
Where is that? Is that in the utility budget?
Actually, it's in every budget, because we split it by where those employees are. So there's a portion of it in the utility fund for utility fund employees, there's a portion in sanitation, there's a portion in general. Right now, those were just lump sum figures that we plugged in to our non-departmental. So if you're looking on the page that lists out the departments, it's actually included in non-departmental. And what we will do is, whether that is at the end of the first quarter or the second quarter, we will come up with a budget amendment, and we will line and move those items to the actual departments. Because right now, we're not sure, you know, by department, how much the adjustment is going to be. We're just now going through the process of reviewing the compensation plan that was provided by the consultant. So once we have those numbers, we'll come back to y'all with a budget amendment to move them from non-departmental into the various departments. But yes, the general fund, it's about $400,000 in the general fund, I think about $100,000 in utility, and then a smaller amount in sanitation and airport.
So the amount in the utility fund that I saw, it says administration, $124,000.
Do you recall, in utility?
It's a line I remember. It says administration, $124,000.
Do you have the budget in front of you? Could you tell me what page you're talking about? That might be easier for you to find it.
I have a note on my paper today that reads like it.
You said it was 124? Let me just see if I can search real quick for that amount. Well, would it help you if you looked at the budget? Because I'm not sure that I've seen it.
I see them on page 14, and sanitation.
Oh, okay. In sanitation, yes, there is a new administrative department in sanitation. Yeah, sanitation administration. That is an actual creation of that department for the employees that handled administrative work. They worked previously in public works administration. And the majority, 90-plus percent of their job duties, are related to sanitation fund. And so those two employees were transferred into sanitation department, so they created that administrative role in sanitation department, where they used to be in the utility and the general fund.
Okay, so that would be less amount expenses in the general.
Yes, we moved that from the general fund into the sanitation fund, yes.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, sort of relatedly then. So would that alleviate the amount of inter-fund transfer?
It does. We actually moved the two administrative people into that department, and also the brush truck crews. We had two brush truck crews that were paid previously out of the street department, but their job, 100% of their job, is collection of that revenues. And so they were also moved. And so that did change the amount of the inter-fund transfers for sanitation.
And along the same lines, I maybe should have brought this up earlier, but just, I know that last year, we discussed more broadly the inter-fund transfer amount, and how there was maybe a way that we could come up with a formula to more closely reflect the actual amount, right, of the cost that's being transferred from one to the other, closely reflect what's actually being paid for. Does that make sense?
It does make sense.
I wanted to ask you if we had made any headway in that. I know that this is like a sort of a nutty year with the pandemic, or if there were plans to do so.
We actually made a little bit of an adjustment. The problem there is, there's a trade-off. And so if we reduce the amount of transfers, then taxes or something else has to go up in order to recover that. And so we did a little bit, the way we split the budgets for the general fund areas that make that transfer, we were able to reduce those percentages on some of our bigger departments this year. So we were able, we've done it a little bit along every year, but we just have to do it piece by piece. Because if we were to go, and I think we talked about this last year, it's a million and a half dollars that you have to find in order to get the transfers where we want them. It creates a million and a half dollar swing on the general fund. And so as we can find those little pieces, we are trying to do that. I know we talked about franchise fee transfers. We're currently at 8%. We would like to see that at 7%. We tried to figure it this year, it just didn't, it just didn't work. So as we're going through each year, that's something that we always try to work on as much, but it's just going to have to be whittling it a little at a time.
That makes sense. Thank you. Yeah, people, not today, and not this year. I haven't heard anything this year, but it seems like pretty consistently people make comments about it.
Always, yeah.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Anything else?
Sure. Would you mind touching just a little bit on H.B. 2, the pass last year, and the consequences both in the vernacular and also the consequences of the maximum revenue?
Right, right. So Senate Bill 2 passed last year, which significantly changed the way property taxes are processed in the state of Texas. For municipalities, in the past, we had what was called the effective tax rate, which is basically the rate that it takes to bring in the same amount of revenue as the prior year, whatever happens with their evaluations. They set that rate so that you bring the same revenue. But then there was also what was called a rollback rate. And that was the highest that you could go without triggering a election to go above that. Now, those terms have changed. Under the prior law, the rollback rate was 8%. So theoretically, a city could raise property tax rates 8% annually. Under the new law, now what was the effective tax rate is now known as a no-revenue rate, which is kind of what it is, so that does make sense. And then the rollback rate is now the voter-approved rate. And it is limited to 3.5% now instead of the 8%. So even in a really, really bad year, in order to increase property taxes, we're stuck at 3.5% now, unless we go to the voters to try to go above that. And it's triggered, it's an automatic election going forward now. So that's the big difference in what Senate Bill 2, the main difference is, it did change the vernacular, but it also changed the ability for us to generate revenue as well.
I have a question about, I'm sorry, valuation, not the valuation. Is it that much lower this year than last year that we need to do a tax rate?
We're going to, when we get to the tax rate, public hearing, we're going to discuss that a little bit more. But we did lose value this year, mostly in our industrial and mineral category. And so we did lose some value this year. So even the no-revenue rate is higher than our prior year rate because of that. But we are going to go into some more detail on the tax rate, too.
Are there any more questions about the budget? Okay. Thank you. If not, you can go.
Yep, here's the next one.
Okay. And B, receive citizen input, hold discussion, and give staff direction on fiscal year 2020, 2021 proposed tax rate. So you may continue.
All right, let's see. Oh, can you load that up? I forgot what I was supposed to tell him, I'm sorry. This one is going to be a little bit of a tag team, too. I'm going to ask Mario to come up in a few minutes. But while he's loading that, the presentation tonight, basically, like I said, we're going to have some discussions on the tax rate. But what we're going to talk about first is the actual proposed rate that y'all voted on several meetings ago. And so, let me jump over. Okay, so our assist value this year was a little over $1.78 billion. This includes approximately $10 million in new property that was added to the tax roll this year. Our prior year tax rate was 61.4 cents per $100 valuation. Our calculated no-revenue tax rate went up to 61.6 per $100 valuation, and our voter-approval rate is .63384 per $100 valuation. Our voted-on proposed tax rate, if you'll remember, is 63 cents. That includes almost $10 million for operating maintenance and 1.3 for debt service. This generates an additional $365,000 in new revenue. Of that, $60,000 was from new construction, and the additional $300,000 was actually from the rate increase itself. Once again, this is based on a home, average home value of $108,000 before exemptions. This does not fluctuate too much here in Nacogdoches. This has been kind of consistently our average home value for the last several years. This shows under the proposed tax rate of 63 cents, that the average homeowner would have a $544 tax liability. Under the no-revenue tax rate, if it was adopted, would be $532 tax liability. So this, you'll see, is a tax increase to the citizens of about $12,000, $12 in annual tax liability for this average home value. Of course, if your home is worth 200, or 300, or 400, you know, you just have to, it's an exponential increase in that. But this is just to show the average home value is at a $12 increase. I'm going to ask Mario to come up for a minute for a little further discussion on the tax rate.
Thank you, Pam. And I'm going to take this off so I can actually not yell at you. Really, just real quick, as you know, when we visited with you all eight years ago, and it was great debate about, you know, raising taxes in 2020. I think we've got some good news for you, and to give us an option. And again, you all voted, I think that was a maximum rate to go, and of course, works into the numbers that we think we're able to hopefully accomplish something that you all are happy to hear. I will tell you, I've been in this, I work in city government for 24 years. 2020 is one of those years that is off the charts, very weird, very strange. Most of you, if you've been in any business, you've gone through the tech bubble in the late 90s, you've gone through the issues post 9/11, right after that, then the Great Recession in '08, '09, and then 2010, and then now here we are in 2020. The economy was booming, then it got shut down in mid-March, and was closed for about six to eight weeks, and then reopened in a staggered fashion in late May, early June, and then it sort of closed back again because of some of the issues happening around the state with the surge in COVID cases. And so cities across the state, even before I came here in Nacogdoches, we were in the same boat, really very concerned about sales tax, concerned about appraised values, everyone going through their issues. Being in a university town, university closed, just like they did here, and so people were very concerned. Up till, really, just recently, your staff has done a really good job holding expenses. The economy in Algonwood has really done well, sales tax perspective, as Curbo mentioned. We did lose some appraised value, which is not a good thing, but for the most part, to say, it's helped its own. But based on where we find ourselves now, based on even with the information that was presented last week with the Commission of Business Bureau, we'll be able to assist them over the next few years, we are able to confidently recommend you not have to go to the proposed tax rate. In other words, you could actually go to the no-tax rate if you so choose. So again, it's, we've been fortunate that we've been able to hold on to expenses. Sales tax is holding its own. We have healthy home balances, and we're able to accommodate everything we can, and you can still adopt a budget, or at least give direction for staff to propose a no-revenue rate of the, I think it's what, .616?
.66.
If you so choose. You have the ability to go to the 63 cents if you want to, but you don't have to if you don't want to. So just wanted to put that out of you as an option. And so, and so really, this piece is really, so, you know, what is the answer?
Well, since next week, and I apologize profusely for all of these meetings in September, but they just were not, just not held. Part of Senate Bill 2 was changing the way we adopted the timeframe and all that good stuff. But next week, when we come to y'all, we're going to have another public hearing on both the budget and the tax rate, and we're going to ask you to adopt the budget and the tax rate. So in order for me to bring you a budget and a tax rate to adopt next week, I need some direction from you tonight, whether you want to stay with the proposed rate of 63 cents, and we adopt what you have before you, or do you want to go back to the no-revenue rate? And I will, I've already done it, but I will renew all of this and resend you a new budget based on that rate. And then what we actually vote on next week will be an actual budget reflected of the 61.6. So tonight, I just need some direction, if you want to stay, of course, with the 63 cents, or if y'all want to go back and proceed with the 61.6 no-revenue rate, just so that I bring y'all something next week to actually vote on that is accurate.
Okay. Before we get to council questions and discussion, I would like to ask if there's anyone here that has a public comment about this.
Yes, we did have the items that were in the package.
Okay, so we received three?
Received three letters.
One email.
And one email that were against all our initiatives.
Okay, thank you for that reminder. Okay, so now, council, that is a surprise for us.
Well, it's a surprise for us, too. A good one, though.
So council, questions, comments?
So, so to make up the difference between the 63 cents and the no-revenue tax, can you talk a little bit about what you have to do to make that work better, once?
Okay, so as the budget, the budget you currently have, there is about a $265,000 additional revenue over expenditures as it's reflected now. So if we do go back and adopt the no-revenue rate, we'd lose about $250,000 of that new revenue, okay? But at the end of the day, our revenues are still about $15,000 over our expenditures. So our budget is still balanced, we're not pulling down on reserves. And so that's why, you know, Mario was saying, this is really unusual, this doesn't normally happen, this, we've never got to this point in the budget process, and then wanted to, you know, make these kinds of changes. But this year has been very, very odd for us. But yes, the no-revenue rate, we will still present a balanced budget, and there will not be no pull-down on reserves in order to do that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just basically a general question about the idea of staying with the no-revenue rate. That, am I clear in understanding that no department, no services are going to suffer for that? And our reserve will stay at its current level?
Our reserve is at its current level. If you'll recall, this budget is built on the fact that general fund, we had five or six positions that we did not budget for next year. And those will be added back to the budget next year as needed. Some of those may be added back, and some may be completely eliminated, that will just be looked at next year. So yes, next year, we have the potential of maybe having to add back some of that funding, not all of it, I don't anticipate. And I think it was like 140 total for all of it.
But we can still come out balanced and still live.
Right, and that would be for next year, you know, and that includes, right, and next year, we may have to look at that raise in the tax rate next year. But for this year, there's nothing that precludes us from operating within, you know, a good budget if we stay on the no-revenue rate. Now, with that being said, we have a $15,000 swing between revenues and expenditures. And so we will definitely have to hold the line on expenses. If revenues do not come in next year at the way we have anticipated, then we may have to do some internal, you know, management issues with spending, but, you know, that's the key here for that.
But it'll foresee that?
No, and I think we've done a very good job of really keeping, especially sales tax, very conservative. We budgeted sales tax very low because we really didn't know what was going to happen. And I think honestly, I think we will see, unless things just go really, really south for us in Nacogdoches, I think we're going to see us even pick up some revenue there just because we budgeted it so conservatively.
Thank you.
Does that interfere with the compensation plan, right?
No, we actually built in, and I think that was part of the initial reason that we met with the proposal, was we weren't sure what those, what the compensation amount was going to be. In the very beginning, we were afraid that those initial first-year numbers were going to be separate $800,000 for general fund. And now we know that they're going to be around 400, maybe a little more by the time we factor in overtime, but that was, another one of the unknowns. At the time that we actually proposed the 63 cents, we thought we were going to have to put more into the compensation plan than we did. Now, with the compensation plan, we've talked about that before, that's a multi-year phase-in. The 400,000 in the general fund, 100 in utility, basically gets us started on the plan, and then we will have additional years that we've got to work through and get everybody where they need to be. Doing it in one year is not feasible for us, it may be over a million dollars to do it in one year. So that's why we're phasing that in. We have the revenue sufficient to do year one, we feel pretty confident.
That 260, or 250,000 extra wouldn't help move that along in any real way?
Now, we can, of course, that's an option, it's there, it can be utilized however y'all choose. If we stay with the 63 cents, that additional revenue can be at any point during the year if y'all decide you want to speed up the compensation process, or we want to do something different than, you know, maybe what we were planning. Yes, of course, that would be after your discretion, how you use that funding.
Oh, sort of, my next question is what, if it would just sit in a pot somewhere for like emergency, extra money?
There's a multitude of things that you could do with it. Of course, you know, it's always there in case other revenues don't come in, you've got that. But at this point, there's no definite plan for it, and so that's why we're offering that to y'all. Unless y'all have something that you have a definitive plan for it, we can, this year, we can operate within a budget based on the no-revenue rate if needed.
The letters that we got and the email that we got all said the same thing, and I'm sure are echoing a lot of the sentiment in this community, which is that this has been a really hard year, people have lost their jobs, and so tax rate increases even if they're not, I mean, what is nominal for one person is not a nominal for somebody else. And so that's definitely been the sentiment, something that I felt, that I really heard. And so it is a surprise. Now, when you say $12 annually based on $108,000 home valuation, right, I mean, that, hearing that helps a little bit, because I think when people hear tax increase, they think something a lot more than what actually the calculation turns out, turns out to be. I think with the compensation plan, the plan that you had originally in terms of the phase-in, I mean, for this year, it was going to be a very incremental type, small increase. Like after, I guess, my Like after, I guess my question is, after this year, once we've adjusted some, at least taken the first step to adjust compensation, where will we be relative to where we want to be?
Okay, so the way we anticipate the phase in being, first year, we're going to, because this basically changes the entire pay structure, okay? And so what we're going to do is we're going to plug all existing employees into the new pay structure at whatever level is above where they are now. So if they make $15 an hour now, and the chart goes from 1440 to 1520, we will plug them in at 1520. So there's going to be people that see a small increase and some that see a significant increase. Year one is to get everybody plugged into an accurate pay scale. Year two is, what we hope is to implement a merit system that we actually will budget for a merit-based increase across the board, that needs to be based on, you know, accurate employee evaluations and that type of thing. But that will be going forward of what we need to try to fund, and that's what is not funded now, an actual way to move within those new pay structures. We're going to get everybody there, but in order to move them through and utilize the pay structures that we've set up, we need a budget for that, and that's what we are going to have to pull in year two. And that is, that's kind of right now the unknown.
Because I hear the concern certainly of the residents, but also it feels weird to say, well, we have to phase in very slowly this compensation plan to get, to pay our employees what we think they deserve to be paid, which indicates that they're not being paid what they deserve to be paid. So it's weird to hear that and then hear, oh, but we have these $150,000, you know what I'm saying?
Maybe I didn't elaborate enough, but yeah, go ahead.
Part of the thing with the compensation plan is to bring employees into the market, they're below market, right?
Right.
So bringing in, it's, you have to bring, you've got to bring someone into the market of where they are, and then you've got to give them time to let them grow into their pay structure. In other words, you have to have time and position and actually set a series of expectations, a series of goals, you've got to achieve those goals. It's like I do, you know, working for you all, there has to be a series of goals, and the only way you do that is you've got to give them time to actually do that. So phase one is to bring them to market. Phase two would be to pay for performance, but you've got to budget for that. There's no point in bringing people to market if you're not going to actually have integrity in your pay structure and not pay them for the future that can actually grow within their pay range. So year two is, year two, year three, I mean, in other words, this is a forever thing. And then every few years, when we go back and we reevaluate, what is market for a position? Market changes based on engineering, technology, those positions are hot commodities, and so you have to go back and do every so often, evaluate what the cost is of those positions, and then you have to then adjust the market again. So it's not just a one-time thing, and even if we, even if we tried to correct all the ills at once, it'd be very challenging even to administer it, because there is no time for the employee to be able to be evaluated and say, okay, you're at market, you just have to have literally physical time into the position so they can actually grow and create a merit structure that is commensurate with what they did and have before.
So then bringing to market, which is what the goal is for year one, that means what bringing their pay up commensurate to what that pay is in this area?
Well, the salary survey that the company did.
Okay, it is bringing it to that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
It's a little different than the one we did several years ago, when we tried to bring everybody to the minimum on the salary survey that we did in-house. This is based solely on all of their market data, and we are going to get everybody to market. And that's what the money that's built with the budget now is to satisfy that first piece, and then we're going to build in the merit system after that.
But the money that's budgeted right now is not part of the merit?
No, it is just to get everybody to market.
Yes, everybody on base.
And how does that work with our public safety, with our police and fire, because they have been...
We did, the consultants did a public safety market analysis and all other positions. We have all the data, and we're working through right now how to fit everybody into the new pay structures. But yes, there will be, there will be some significant changes, especially in public safety, on getting their salaries to market.
And this information will all be presented?
Oh, yeah.
But not before next week?
No, 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 no. That will be, that will be part, that's why we just built in, into non-departmental, the 400,000 in General Fund to hold that place in the budget. And then when we get all the final data, we will come to y'all with that, and that's when we'll leave it around to, you know, however much it needs to go to police or fire, based on all these actual incremental increases for each of the employees.
What you have right now is basically this.
Yeah.
But it's meant, but the intention is that year one, even if we do the no new revenue, it's built in to bring all city employees, including public safety and fire, up to market?
Yes.
That's right.
Now, when that happens, maybe after the first quarter or the second quarter, not real sure, but yes, that is the plan, is to get, in this budget year, that placeholder will accomplish that for all the employees.
Any questions? I know they need direction on which way to go. I need some time with it, so I'm not, you know, I'm more of a be prepared for either one, but I don't know how anyone else feels. That's what I was going to say, I don't know that I can, I have some other, you know, detailed questions that you can sign us, so I...
Yeah, I would agree. If we can come with both proposed budgets next week, then I'd say I don't think that will work. I love the idea of not raising that rate, this just a little bit helps.
I can certainly bring you both scenarios. Keep in mind, we have to, but we have to vote on the budget before we vote on the tax rate.
Right, right.
So we will, yeah.
We'll have to make that decision.
Make that decision at that point, because it, yeah, once you voted on the budget, that kind of, you know, locks in what you're going to do on the tax rate. We do have to do that first.
This is critical, and to, you know, this is the first we've heard of this, so that's kind of not fair to us.
How did you, not today?
Let's move on to number C, receive a report for discussion and give staff direction regarding Convention and Visitors Bureau proposed 2020-2021 budget. Erin Morgan, good evening.
You should have received in your packets two documents. We'll start with a marketing plan per contract with the city. We're required to present a marketing and a proposed marketing budget plan to council. It's a very simplistic marketing plan this year, focusing on our brand identity, which is the oldest town in Texas, beautiful natural assets, charming, quaint, and relevant. We've added safe and socially responsible, and that's in response to traveler sentiment surveys that we've received, as well as just the social climate of the last year. For messaging and campaigns, both standalone and co-op, we'll stick with our, we have an app for that, that was brought to us with our partner marketing agency, Hancock. And then to target, a new target audience of millennials and Gen Z'ers, we'll be starting up our hip story, wherein we introduce to a new, younger market our historic stories and assets in a way that's palatable and accessible to them. And then a continued effort to highlight the resiliency of our community, we'll be sticking with our we bet not break. Our target audience has been, we will hold a place for our retirees. Our historical data shows us that those are our tried and true, the people that come year after year to see us and visit us, they don't really require a lot of marketing to, they know about us and they're going to, those are mostly repeat travels as well. So we will hold a place for them, and then newly target millennials and Gen Z's, and continue to market to multigenerational travelers. And that's simply people that are traveling in families. Our media placement, we're reducing our print placement in Texas highways, that's where we traditionally run third-page vertical ads. We'll be reducing those from six to three. In Texas Monthly, we traditionally run full-page ads. We will be increasing those as we can and pass the part where we run single message just from the CBB. Those extra buys from Texas Monthly will be co-op marketing buys, where we invite partners such as Nedco, or Sam Augustine, or some of our surrounding communities to partner with us in turn. The sawdust, so that we can market to people that are familiar with Macadogues, that are further along in their career and might have more of an interest in bringing back their families or business meetings, social media, Google Ads and blogs. One of the benefits of targeting a younger demographic is that they consume their marketing digitally, and that is the most cost-effective way, and also provides us with the most data. Any questions about the marketing plan? Anything you'd like to see added?
I'm kind of excited to get to see the hip story.
Thanks, you too. I would like to take a moment and talk about money to acknowledge two board members that are present tonight. John McLaren is the chairman of the CBB Board of Directors, also the general manager for the Fodden Hotel, and Dr. Shay Reynolds with Stephen F. Austin State University. Shay is, I'm proud to call her a friend, but she's also an icon on the state level for hospitality and tourism. And if we could suspend disbelief in some kind of space-time continuum, because I'm older than her, I would like to be her when I grow up. She knows, she knows her stuff. And then we have Mike Fay with us, he's our visitor service coordinator, and Ashley Jordan is our creative content director. Joanna Temple is our sales director. She has, a family member who's very ill, so we could remember her in our prayers, that would be great. And then of course, Kristen Hock, our great partner with Hancock Advertising.
Excuse me, I went to sleep a minute ago, but I haven't had a course in my head.
Okay. Well, good morning.
You mentioned attractive younger crowd, younger businesses. What is it different than in the past as to why we wouldn't attract them before, or is there something, are we bad at it?
Well, and not to overgeneralize, because I think that diminishes the intellect of the, you know, you don't want to see any generalizations ever, but when it comes to the marketing, you know, there are behaviors and patterns that tend to rise to the top. And my example is, so we have several different stories, historic stories to tell about Macadogues. So we have Red House Winery, which is something that is probably of more interest, we know, through our data, to a younger crowd. And in and of itself, it's a great establishment, you can go there and not know anything about the name Red House Winery and still enjoy it. But if we take the time to reframe a same business, the same business model, we're still same product, same hours of operation, the whole chit-mang, but we tell the story of the Red House and why it's called the Red House Winery, then we've, we've snuck in, I think I refer to it as, you know, mixing in broccoli with the spaghetti sauce to get vegetables into kids. That, that on a really professional marketing. But just delivering messages like that, that are just more accessible to them, and then they have, oh, I know that, and it pulls them into the community, and while they're here, you know, it might not be all that attractive if you say, come to Macadogues and visit the historic Stern-Huia house. Okay, old house, cool. But if we can give some of the details about it, about the blue and the gray dinner that took place on the lawns, or the story of the genius Stern, and the history of the park that Sam Houston gave to that park on the 13th birthday, then we've painted more of the tale that gives it more meaning, more value to a younger audience. You're welcome. So on the budget that you received, the items that are marked in green are the ones that should approve, should it be approved, will be covered by the generous and much appreciated subsidy by the city. And that did turn out to be $108,600. That will cover $25,200 for the health and dental insurance, the rest of the salaries will be covered through our remittance of the hotel occupancy tax, our portion of that. And then the bulk of the administrative costs, which include accounting and legal dues and subscriptions, which were really important to me that we have, so we subscribe to things such as an economic impact calculator. It's about $5,000 a year, but what it does, it allows us and our community partners to take an event or a weekend and plug in our numbers, and it spits out, based on this algorithm that comes from Yale and Oxford, this really accurate indicator of not just the economic impact that that had on our community, but it divides it out into the different segments. So we know if it were gas, or lodging, or food and beverage, or retail, so it really gives us a lot more information that we can then use to make more informed decisions moving forward. And then we also subscribe to a media monitoring service called Metalwater, and if we were to have had to cut that in the budget, we would have lost all the past data that we've been acquiring over the last three years, it would have been the end of the world. But as we move forward, and we know that there will be an after, it sure would be nice to be able to have those benchmarks to see how far we've grown. We have significantly reduced our budget as well in-house, where we could, and even with that, we won't be spending anywhere, you know, we are really only, I jokingly say it's BYOP, bring your own pen, but we are really cutting down extraneous expenses where we can and finding sponsorships for things that we need as well. Our sales budget, as you can see, has the most significant percentage-wise adjustment to it, just because groups aren't traveling in right now, and so we don't have the need for named ads and itineraries and get-to-betts and things like that. And then marketing, we're looking at a reduction of 162,000 down to a proposed 99,200. And it bears mentioning that even with this, we did have to dip into our reserves to finish out this fiscal year, and that's probably going to end up being about 30,000. We've already taken 20,000, it should take about 10,000 more out of our reserves to complete this last month that we're in. And even with these, without any additional fundraising or money from other foundations or things like that, we'll dip into our reserves again. We do plan, 2021 marks our 25th anniversary, so we do plan to leverage that with some fundraising efforts as well, and it should be a great time to also take a trip down every lane, see where we've been and where we're going. And are there any more questions about the budget? I have a request, so with our 25th anniversary coming in 2021, we have decided to do a love letters to Macadogues micro campaign, starting now. So if you go to visitmacadogues.org/love-letters, we want love letters from individuals, from families, people who've moved away, people that never left, people that got here just as quickly as they could. people that never left, people that got here just as quickly as they could. I think it would be a great school activity for kids. But to really look at Macadoches and tell us in the form of a love letter, just, you know, espouse those traits of Macadoches that are most beloved by you and your family and your loved ones, and you can include pictures. And our hope is to collect enough letters to bind them in a book. So in February or on Valentine's Day, we can sell that as a fundraiser. But it also gives us a pause during these unprecedented times. It's really easy to sort of get caught up in what you can't do and the bleak in the world. So we're hoping that this can really tap into people and shift their focus to the positive and the really great things about Macadoches because we all know that there are far more great things than that. Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any, well, is there anyone here publicly that would like to say anything? Counsel, any other questions for her? Okay. So you guys have been through quite a bit in the last few months and you're over there in your own little corner in your own little chairs. And I hope you have felt the support from, I know I can speak for the council and for fellow city employees and the community as a whole. Because a lot of people, everybody's kind of caught up in their own thing and may have not realized what was happening with the CBB without people traveling. And so you all have really, I applaud you because you've been creative, you all have stuck with it. I know it's, it's been kind of scary and, and hard. And I'm thrilled that the city was able to find the means to, to help you just over this little, little hump and then things will, will be back to be a lot more fun next year.
Thank you so much. And truly, it has been developed and noticed and abundantly appreciated. So we've promised to be good stewards of the money and to continue to make you proud. And to, we really want to be an example to other destinations that you don't need a lot of money to make a big impact. And so that's our, that's our challenge moving forward, to do great things with a lot of heart and not so much money.
Well, we appreciate you, thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes our meeting for September 8th, 2020. Thank you all for attending.